Thank you. That would be awesome. I'll have my little roll.
Yes, exactly.
I don't mind.
I would, in all seriousness, I would greatly appreciate that. Yeah, I mean, it'd be nice.
Oh, thanks, Alan. We're waiting for you.
All right.
I know an address where everybody's phone is going off so they can run back to it.
All right. Moving on, we'll start with presentations and reports. A financial update from Tara, please. Ms. Woodruff.
Good evening, Chairman Cast, members of the school board, and Dr. Parrish. For the finance report this evening, I want to discuss health insurance with you. It's an important piece that will be coming with the budget. Health insurance continues to be a large cost to the school division. In the past eight budget cycles, PCPS has fully covered the cost of premium increases. And during this time, total premiums have increased 56 percent. Depending on the plan you have, PCPS pays between $6,333, excuse me, $6,330 and $16,426 per year towards an employee's health coverage, with an average of $10,705 per year for those employees participating in the health insurance plan. This is a visual graph to show you one option, which is the employee-only coverage. It shows you the annual premiums for both PCPS and the employee from FY '09 to FY '17, so that you can see the changes that have happened over these years. The red line is the employee portion that has remained the same since FY '09, which is $54 a year. And the red line shows how the division has paid and how the annual costs have increased each year. This is the graph for the employee-only coverage, but if I showed you the other options, it would look very similar to this. There have been some modifications to the plan during the recession. PCPS went from three plans to two, with one of them being a high-deductible plan. Education was provided about high-deductible plans, and PCPS provides a contribution, which is a one-time contribution of $600 to employee-only and $1,200 for employees who have two or more covered on the plan, which can help to offset the deductible. Copays were increased for the HMO plan, but premiums were not increased. During January, we conducted a health insurance survey from our employees, and we had a great response, with 83 percent of all employees responding to the survey, 78 percent of all teachers responded. And the survey respondents indicated preferences in terms of components of the plan and possible changes to the plans. And this data will be used in the decision-making process in the coming weeks. We received 13 different considerations from our insurance consultant, and possible changes could include creating a deductible on one plan, changing pharmaceutical costs, changes for new employees only, and changes to employee premiums. The school division has a benefits committee, which is made up of teachers and staff from each school. And the benefits committee will meet on Thursday, February 23rd, to provide input to senior staff with regard to specific considerations for change. And the superintendent's budget will include recommendations for changes to these health insurance plans. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments for Ms. Woodruff?
Yes. Did I hear you write that it's $10,750-some per employee, employee only?
That is per employee. It's an average of all employees that are participating. So some are in the employee only and some are in the family. So depending on the plan, that's the average per employee that's paid.
And HMO-type coverage?
It's HMO and we have a high-deductible plan. So that's an average of all the plans.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Pappas, could you come forward with the operations update, please?
Good evening, school board, Chairman Cast, Dr. Parrish. This evening, a few topics, one of which is transportation. Our VML insurance, which is our insurance provider, Virginia Municipal League, offers us the opportunity to save 5 percent off of our considerable insurance bill for automobiles if we participate in a program of defensive driving, which is called Where the Rubber Meets the Road. And we have done so for several years. So once again, we will be sending one of our trained trainers to that training. And when they return, it's incumbent upon us to train a minimum of 50 percent of our drivers. And we will be sending all of our bus drivers and our maintenance crew, the people to whom we have, in essence, allotted vehicles, to this training. And we far surpass the requirement. So we're very happy that we'll be doing that again. In the area of maintenance, if anybody was out behind the high school today, you would have noticed that we were working on the asphalt phase of the CIP project for putting a new track surface down. So today they did the infield, where the high jump is and the broad jump and areas like that. And they got started on some of the bends. And tomorrow, barring rain, we should be finished paving with that phase. The next phase will be putting down the rubber surface and, of course, painting the lines. In order to do that, we have to have daytime temperatures at least 70 degrees and nighttime temperatures not fall below 47. We're hoping that the spring break might offer us an opportunity to do that. Otherwise, we will be waiting until the culmination of the school year. As part of the project, the lighting needs for the track are a consideration. And once we identify what we have to do and once we get that lighting installed necessary to illuminate both the track and the infield, we'll get that process done. All of this is being done as part and parcel of the funding for the track project. Once the track project is complete, we'll be able to install a permanent fence for the softball field. We can't do so until the track project is complete, but we'll have that done for the 2018 softball season. In the area of food service, we're going to receive $3,919 in state incentive funding for increased breakfast participation. This is available for schools who have increased their breakfast participation over the 2004, 2000, sorry, 2003, 2004 year. And in 2015, 16, we beat that baseline. Those funds remain part of the school nutrition program. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Pappas. Any questions or comments for Mr. Pappas?
I'd like to say something. I think the whole high school is very excited to see the new track coming in. Maybe that's just me because I run track, but I think everyone's very excited to see that happen.
That's great. And we're glad that we can do that for the school and the community. It's a great thing.
Well, my phone started ringing also today about the track going in. So thank you very much. I did take credit for it, Mr. Pappas.
As you should.
And I'm sure softball is excited about their permanent fence. So thank you, Commission, as well.
And I have one more question. If I eat breakfast every morning at a school, will that help your numbers? I'd be willing to do that. Dr. Fox, could we have an instructional update, please?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Cast, members of the board, and Dr. Parrish. I have a variety of instructional updates for you this evening. Last month, you approved the program of studies for the 2017-18 school year. Our middle and high school students are busy reviewing courses and are meeting with school guidance counselors to make final course requests. Counselors have met with fifth graders and eighth-grade students to provide insights about the transition to middle and high school and to provide information on course selection. Picosen Middle School held a Rising Sixth Grade Parent Information Night on February 13th, and the high school held its Rising Freshman Night for the class of 2021 on February 1st. Picosen Primary held two kindergarten registration and orientation opportunities for families on February 6th and 7th. Rising kindergarten students and their families registered, signed up for screenings, toured the school, made a craft, met new friends, and took home a new book to read before coming to school in the fall. Currently, there are 98 students registered, but we suspect that there may be more kindergarten students in the community. If any of our families did not have a chance to attend one of the registration events, please stop by the primary school during school hours to register your student. Our students in eighth and 11th grade will be taking the Writing SOL Assessment during the week of March 13th. Students will sit for two portions of the test. The first section is a multiple-choice style test that is composed of items that require students to correct errors embedded in selections that are intended to model rough drafts of students' writing. This section also contains technology-enhanced items, which you may commonly hear referred to as TEI items. An example of a TEI item might be one that allows a student to correct punctuation errors by dragging commas into a sentence. The second portion of the Writing SOL asks students to write a short paper in response to a prompt. A sample eighth-grade prompt is, "Think about how daily life, from reading to playing games to communicating with others, has changed after the, has changed over the past 100 years because of technology. Using specific details and examples, explain how these advancements in technology have changed daily life." An example of an 11th-grade prompt is, "Some say that the journey is more important than the destination. They argue that people find more joy and satisfaction in working toward a goal rather than achieving it. Others say that it's the destination that gives meaning to the journey. Take a position on the issue. Use reasons and specific examples to support your ideas." Student scores from both of these assessments are combined to provide an overall SOL writing assessment score. The results from these assessments are not expected until later this year, but we will share that information with you once we receive it. Teachers serving on our Division Math Committee, which is an integral part of the implementation of our DODIA STEM grant, recently participated in a math manipulative fair to explore the use of hands-on manipulatives in math classrooms in grades K through 12. Staff from TTEC, which is the Training and Technical Assistance Center at ODU, walked our teachers through the use of manipulatives to develop students' abstract and concrete thinking in mathematics. And teachers were provided with an assortment of manipulatives and lesson strategies to take back to their classrooms. The math committee will weave the use of these manipulatives into the curriculum as they work to rewrite our math curricula using recently revised math standards. And finally, tonight, we wish to congratulate some of our students who have been selected to compete in the 66th Annual Tidewater Science Fair, excuse me, Tidewater Science and Engineering Fair, which will be held on Saturday, March 11. We have 13 total entries, with 27 students competing as either a team or an individual. Thank you to the teachers and the parents who are supporting our students in this endeavor, and we wish all of them the very best on March 11. And this concludes my update.
Thank you, Dr. Fox. Any questions or comments? On, people. Somebody ask what DODIA means.
The 98 kindergarten students, how does that stand in, how does that compare to past years at this point?
It's, we've got a few more than we did last year out of the registrations. So it gives us hope that we might see at least as many registered next year and possibly more. We know that we do get some in between that in the summer, and then even some after school starts. But it is a little bit more than what it's been in past years.
Other questions, please?
DODIA is Department of Defense Educational Activity.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And I'd like to acknowledge that, once again, we have Ms. Lee here, who is our military liaison, and she helps us get these wonderful grants. So, good.
Thank you. Dr. Parrish, would you give us a budget update, please?
I decided that I would just go ahead and do this update today in our general meeting rather than holding the work session in part two so the community can see this. What I want to do first is talk quickly about enrollment, which the kindergarten enrollment plays a part in. So what you see here, again, is that since 2006, we've lost 522 students. We're basing that on our September 30 enrollment count. What you see here in the brackets are without preschool. So our entire enrollment on September 30 in '06 and then in '16, in other words, this past September, went from 2602 to 2080. When the state looks at ADM and enrollment, they're not considering preschool, but it's good to give us our perspective because most of our preschoolers do move forward. But you can see there in brackets what it is without preschool. Then you also see that we experienced a loss of 31 students from fiscal year '16 to fiscal year '17 on the September 30 count. We had projected and we built our budget for this current fiscal year that we would see that drop. What we have seen since September 30th into January of this year is a pickup of some students. So now we see a loss of 13 students, if nothing changes between now and the end of the year. And most importantly, the March 30 ADM count, which is what really drives our state funding. But based on the data that we've gotten from the Weldon Cooper Center, again, the center that's that's up associated with UVA and does all the demographics for the state, and looking at where we are, we're still projecting a loss of students, and moving into next year, projecting a loss of twenty-six students. Now, there is building, as we know, going on in the community, but it's just too difficult, and Weldon Cooper Center does not count for, account for in its projections until we know families are moving in. So my hope is that maybe it's actually not a total loss of twenty-six students, but for purposes of the budget, that's what we're building the budget on, because what we don't want to do is overestimate our enrollment and then have to make budget cuts during the course of next year. So that's what we're basing our budget on. Next, I want to talk to you a little bit about the General Assembly budgets. First, I want to remind you, and one of our board members actually asked this question recently, and it's a great question, something good for our community to understand, is when I talk about the standards of quality, we call those the SOQs. They drive our staffing in our school divisions, and that's what actually our funding is based on from the state for staffing. But it's important to note that the SOQ-funded positions only represent sixty-seven percent of our positions. So that means all the rest of our positions on our school division are completely funded by our locality. But in addition to that, the SOQ funding only funds sixty-two percent of the sixty-seven percent of those positions. So the state's not even paying for the full sixty-seven percent of the positions. This is really important because as we talk about personnel, when we talk about compensation, people need to understand that it's really our locality that's covering a very large portion of our personnel. Now, when I presented an update to you in January, which also I did a narration of, and we posted on our website, so if anybody is watching and would like to see that, you can just go right to our website on the budget page, and you'll see it there. The governor and his budget proposed a one-and-a-half percent bonus for SOQ positions. And I'm stressing the compensation issues here because those are really the three main differences between the governor's budget, the senate's budget, and the house budget, with one other difference with the house. The senate budget provides, instead of a one-and-a-half percent bonus, which realize a bonus is seen as a one-time payment, so doesn't mean a guarantee of an increased compensation into the next year, and a reminder that last year, the General Assembly did put in a two percent raise, but in the fall, we were told the funding was not coming for that. So we did keep that raise in. We had to use local dollars to pay for it. But the senate is, in their budget, providing a two percent raise, again, for only SOQ-funded positions, so just sixty-seven percent, with sixty-two percent of those being funded. But the total dollars allotted in the budget is actually lower than the governor's budget. Now, the house approached this a little differently. What they've done is, with the funding model they've put forth, they're actually providing some more flexibility in lottery revenue. And what they're doing is allowing school divisions of their budget to use the lottery money if they wish to give an increased compensation. So that is seen as ongoing funding, not as a bonus. Now, the only other thing that they did differently, which makes their budget higher than the other two, is because we are a school division that suffered a great loss in enrollment in the last ten years, and we're a school division under ten thousand students, they've actually provided money in there to help cover the enrollment loss. But it is only one-time funding, so we have to realize we can't use that money to give a raise because it won't be in the budget next year unless the General Assembly next year decides to put it, put it in the budget for next year. But I have talked to legislators in Richmond, and at this point, the house did not intend for it to be ongoing funding. Now, as you well know, right now, the three budgets are out, and we have the budget conference committee working diligently to try and come to a happy median between the house and senate budgets. We are anticipating that maybe as early as Thursday of this week that we'll actually see the conference committee budget, which will give us a real sense of what we're looking at for next year. We have to wait, again, for those calculation tools, but I do believe that when I bring my budget to you in March, it'll be based on what we're actually going to receive from the state. Now, I do want to point out, I talked about this in January, that none of these budgets provide any relief for the increase in the VRS rate. Remember, I talked to you that we're seeing a big increase in the VRS rate across the Commonwealth for school divisions. For us, it costs us an additional one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars, even though we were getting some funding from the state, we have to find the full one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand. So that was not addressed in any of the three budgets, so we fully anticipate that rate will move forward in the final General Assembly budget with no relief for school divisions. So let's talk again a little bit more about our process. Here are the two budget objectives. We've maintained these objectives consistently for a number of years now. One, we want to continue to ensure our instructional programs remain in place, and we're going to enhance some programs wherever we can. And we want to do our best to provide additional compensation for all employees and try and sustain the transition to the new teacher pay plan. As you remember, last year, we did move teachers to a new pay plan to the first year. We created a three-year transition plan, which, thanks to our board members last year, helped us work through a number of options to get to one that looked somewhat affordable for us. So we want to try and do that. It's going to be a challenge in light of what we're looking at with the budget, but we are crunching numbers and working hard to see if we can maintain it. I mentioned earlier that we expect to have the budget at the end of, by the end of this week, or at least a sense. I wanted to follow up with what Ms. Woodruff talked about in terms of the health insurance issue. We want to make sure that everybody understands that we definitely are going to have to change health benefits, and here's a big reason why. When I met with you all in January, at that point, we were predicting a seven percent increase in healthcare costs, health insurance costs. We found out last week it's a thirteen percent increase in health insurance if we don't, if we don't change anything in our health insurance plans. So that comes at a cost, comes at a total of two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. So in January, I told you there was an increased cost with seven percent of about one-hundred-and-eighteen. Now, what you need to do is add another one-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars on top of that for health insurance. So that's why the information that Ms. Woodruff provided to you is so important. The work that our benefits committee is going to do on Thursday is important. We are really glad to see the responses that we got for the survey that we put out. To have that high of a return rate on that survey was good, and it's given us good data that will help us make good decisions for all of our employees. So with that new increase in the health insurance cost, if we're using the governor's budget, which is technically in between the two in terms of total revenue, his is with the one-point-five percent bonus, that means our budget shortfall right now is four-hundred-and-nine thousand dollars. You may remember that prior to the thirteen percent increase, it was about two-fifty-seven or two-seventy. So we've seen now a big bump because of health insurance. So that's why we're talking about it so much. We sent an email out to all employees, Mrs. Woodruff did, last Friday, to remind them about the benefits committee meeting, to talk to the folks. She listed the people on it so that they would know who to talk to. And, you know, we believe that we can make some changes, but we just need everybody aware of why we're going to have to do that, because health insurance has just come in at such a high cost for us. I continue to talk weekly, if not daily, to our city manager, so I know we'll continue to work well with city staff and certainly city council as we move through the coming weeks and months. So my budget will come to you in the work session at our next board meeting in March. And that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Parrish.
What was the VRS deficit? VRS increase, one-twenty-six?
One-twenty-six is the cost to us. I don't have it off the top of my head. We are getting some funding. You don't remember what it is, do you? Yeah, we're getting some funding from the state, but it comes at a complete cost to us of one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars. We have to find that money. And I wanted to highlight that. There were some other costs that I presented you, just utilities, that type of thing, but that was one we had talked about and talked to our legislators about, but they want to, and I certainly understand why, but they want to have it fully funded at the end of next fiscal year.
Yes, but.
Yes. Dr. Parrish, is the four-hundred-and-nine thousand, is that the worst-case scenario?
I would say yes, at this point. We're double-checking and double-checking to make sure there's no other increased costs. So I believe that will probably be the worst-case scenario in the shortfall unless something different comes out of the conference committee. And we are using this off of the governor's budget. If they go to the senate's budget, it could be slightly different because we get slightly less more money from them, but I think they'll come, usually when they conference, they'll come somewhere in between, so, yes.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you. I think this just shows you how great it is that we have a great relationship with our city council, and we have some work to do together in order to make this work. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Ms. Reimers, do we have any public comment tonight?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you. Ms. Whitaker, could you lead us in the consent agenda, please?
Absolutely. There are four items on the consent agenda. All were enclosed with the board packet that was available online for everybody to review. The items are approval of financial reports, approval of personnel action, authorization for change appropriation in accordance with attached requests, and authorization to dispose of surplus property.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments about the consent agenda? Ms. Reimers?
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Mostel?
Aye.
Hessel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Chairman Cast?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Okay, moving on to other matters for consideration. Item A, consideration of approval of minutes of closed session on December twentieth, two-thousand-and-sixteen, and information's enclosed. Do we have a motion for approval of the closed session?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Ms. Reimers?
Ms. Whitaker?
Abstain.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Abstain.
Ms. Mostel?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Abstain.
Chairman. Aye.
B, abstentions, four ayes. Motion passes.
Easy for you to say, right?
Yes.
Item B, consideration of approval of minutes of January regular meeting. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Ms. Reimers?
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Abstain.
Ms. Mostel?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Chairman Cast?
Aye.
One abstention, six ayes. Motion passed.
Item C, consideration of approval of minutes of public forum on the budget on January nineteenth, two-thousand-and-seventeen. Information's enclosed. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
I do have just one thing I'd like to say. Just to anybody out there who's listening, and those who are here, thank you all that are here, but anybody out there, it's really important that we get everybody's input when it comes to the development of the budget. We didn't have anybody show up. It's not that that's unusual, because often we don't, but it would be very nice if we could at least get some people in here to let us know, hey, we think you're doing great, or we'd like to see, if it's possible, some funding considered to go towards A, B, or C. And we'd really like people to get a little more involved, at least I'd like people to get a little more involved, and tell us what you're thinking. So in the future, if we have a public hearing, it would be nice to see you all.
Well said. We have a motion and a second to approve the approval of the minutes of public forum on budget. It's catching, Ms. Reimers.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Abstain.
Ms. Mostel?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel? Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Chairman Cast?
Aye.
Motion passes six.
Item D, we have two proclamations tonight. Kristi, would you lead us in the National School Breakfast Week proclamation?
Sure.
Ms. Hessel?
I am so.
No problem, Mr. Cast. Whereas over eight million students in the United States participate in the National School Breakfast Program, and where studies show that access to nutritious programs such as the National Lunch Program and National School Breakfast Program helps to create a strong learning environment for children and helps to improve children's concentration in the classroom, and whereas students who eat a complete breakfast have been shown to make fewer mistakes and work faster in math exercises than those who eat a partial breakfast, and whereas studies show that students who skip breakfast are more likely to have difficulty distinguishing among similar images, show increased errors, have slower memory recall. Now therefore be it proclaimed on this twenty-first day of February in the year two-thousand-and-seventeen by the School Board of the City of Picousen, Virginia, that the week of March sixth through tenth, two-thousand-and-seventeen, be hereby celebrated as National School Breakfast Program Week in all of Picousen City Public Schools.
Thank you very much. Mr. Holcomb, could you lead us with the Career and Technical Education Month proclamation?
I'll try to pronounce all the, all the big words. I will. Proclamation, Career and Technical Education Month, February two-thousand-and-seventeen. Whereas economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the structure and nature of today's workplace, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system. And whereas career and technical education are part of the foundation of a strong, well-educated workforce that fosters productivity in business and industry and contributes to Virginia's leadership in the international marketplace. And whereas career and technical education offers individuals lifelong opportunities to learn new skills that provide them with more career choices, expanded learning potential, and greater job satisfaction. Now therefore be it proclaimed on this twenty-first day of February in the year two-thousand-and-seventeen by the School Board of the City of Picousen, Virginia, that the month of February two-thousand-and-seventeen be hereby celebrated as Career and Technical Education Month in all Picousen City Public Schools.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion for approval of the National School Breakfast Week proclamation and the Career and Techno Education Month proclamation?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
Where do these come from?
Some of them come out of VDOE, some of them come from VSBA. They come from a variety of places, and they're just, the standard incentive to approve the proclamations. Sometimes what we're able, we use those to back and recognize employees that fall into the groups that you approve, like for School Counselors Week, we then add flowers for the school counselors along with the proclamation would be an.
So there is somewhere where we could find.
Mr. Pappas could actually explain that to you.
I have a question, and I probably should have asked Mr. Pappas when he was up at the podium, but I have to be honest in saying that I don't even understand what the school breakfast program is. I don't know how it works. I don't know if it's open to every child. I don't, what times it is. Do the kids have to get to school early? Is it something that's in that ten minutes between when their bus drops them off and they're supposed to be in their desk? How, how does the whole program work?
How about if we do this? We will get a presentation together and get that info, and I can get that information out to you. I mean, Mr. Pappas can walk through some of that tonight for you, but I don't know that you want the full, but we can outline by school because the times are different for each, start differently.
That would be fine, but if it could be during one of these meetings, because I don't know, I think other parents probably don't know.
Might help increase our participation. What we'll do is have Mr. Pappas do that as his update next week, so that way parents can learn a little bit more about how they can get breakfast for their students from us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And maybe increase our funding.
That's right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the approval of both proclamations. Ms. Reimers?
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Mostel?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Chairman Cast?
Aye.
that apparently the sound on part of our student presentation did not go across the TV, but we'll have that fixed, and we'll have their presentation through a YouTube channel online tomorrow. So if any of you missed it, we'll have that ready for you tomorrow. Those are my comments for this evening.
Thank you. Mr. McDevitt?
Start off with the, uh, report from the primary school. Parents and community members, mark your calendars and save the date. Pecosin Primary is hosting its second annual Family STEM Night on April 27th from 6:00 to 7:30. We're planning an interactive evening of building, aerodynamics, robots, coding, and more for students and families, presented by faculty and community members. Pecosin Primary kindergarten students participated in Global Play Day. During the afternoon of February 7th, kindergarten students unplugged and disconnected to enjoy some simple playtime. Students played board games, built things, explored, and took advantage of unstructured playtime. Everyone had tons of fun. Pecosin Primary PTO hosted Family Movie Night on February 10th. Families gathered to enjoy popcorn and a movie, Zootopia, courtesy of the PTO. The event was well-attended, with the gymnasium packed with students and families. Second-grade students and their grandparents attended a senior social on February 2nd in support of the American Heart Association. Students and seniors enjoyed time together dancing, playing games, and refreshments. The senior social was the culminating activity for Jump Rope for Heart, raising $5,393.42 for the American Heart Association. The elementary school. Pecosin Elementary School collected donations of non-perishable food for the Peninsula Food Bank as two nights of the fifth-grade musical, The American Revolution. The musical presentations received great reviews, and we thanked Ms. Northcutt for all she does to make these musicals a success. SCA students sold candy grams for Valentine's Day and are donating the money to the Pecosin Volunteer and Rescue Department. On February 2nd, there was a family math night, where parents and students were able to participate in math activities together. February 27th through March 3rd is Read Across America Week, and on Thursday, March 2nd, PES will host Family Reading Night. It is always a great time to see the activities students are able to participate in while engaged in reading, and it is a great time for parents to take home a few helpful ideas to use while reading with their child at home. Today, the PES and the students enjoyed a play called Have You Filled a Bucket Today? Which was provided by the wonderful PES PTO. This Friday, students will have a Jump Rope for Heart assembly to kick off their Jump Rope for Heart Week, which begins next Monday. Students receive pledges from their family and friends to see how many times they can jump without stopping. All money collected goes to the American Heart Association. Fifth-grade students are registering for their classes at the middle school, and it is hard to believe that February is almost over. How time flies when you're having fun. The middle school. Pecosin Middle School conducted parent information nights for our rising sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade students during the month of February. Topics covered during these events included course information, the registration process, and preparing students for high school and beyond. Our eighth-grade physical science classes have been working on speed, time, and distance physics lessons. As an extension of these lessons, students applied programming, programming skills to code a SPRK-plus robot to navigate a student-designed maze automatically. Students were required to gather data about the best route through the maze and figure out how to build a program so that the Sphero could successfully navigate the twists and turns of the maze. Once the maze was designed and complete, the Spheros ran the maze, testing speed, time, and distance. Our eighth-grade students will be taking the Writing SOL on March 14th and 15th. The Take Us Stand-Lend a Hand Bullying Prevention Program at PMS is going to focus on communication and conflict resolution in February and March. Lastly, for the high school. After a cha, a challenging month, the PHS Islanders are persevering and meeting with success both in and out of the classroom. Students are engaged in meaningful learning experience across the curriculum. For example, students in ecology participated in an in-depth study of oysters, which featured a hands-on lab, in class and classroom debates about the introduction of a new species. All 10th-grade students visited the Virginia Holocaust Museum as a culmination to their study of the novel Night. Students in the technical drawing courses presented their prototype designs and inventions to teams of engineers from NASA, and received valuable feedback to guide their revision process. Our entire school community participated in the third bullseye lesson of the year, highlighting resilience as a key aspect of our ongoing bullying awareness program. Our Islanders are also excelling in their extracurricular activities, as students brought home a host of awards from the local DECA competition, as well as the all-district band and choir competitions. Islanders reached the postseason in every winter sport, as well as Scholastic Bowl. Looking to the future, the SCA is bringing our school community together, and together by sponsoring a Spring Spirit Week, which will kick off on March 3rd with a pep rally and will culminate with Spring Fest, a modernized version of the Sadie Hawkins Dance, on March 11th. Students in the PHS marketing courses created a host of promotional videos to advertise the event, and we look forward to recognizing all of the incredible talents of our school community during this festive celebration.